One here. Hello. Can y'all hear me okay out there?
Yes.
I call this, uh... 4:30 PM. We'll have to 4:30. City Council Agenda Work Session being in order. March 26th here. Matt Clark, please call the roll. I'm here.
Rebecca Chase-Wales, District 1, present. Councilmember Jim R., District 2.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District 3.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District 4.
Here.
All present.
No open remarks. Pre-agenda meeting, agenda review. Yes? No, you're not.
In your opening remarks...
Hold on. Quick, quick. I'm happy to be also talking to you on that day. Is that right, please?
Yes, sir, it is. But that's all right.
Check.
Check.
You too, Joe. You'd be mad also.
Check.
James, this is the leader of the band.
Yeah, I was a tour manager for a couple of years for a while and all of a sudden I ran sound. Uh, go ahead.
Just opening remarks. I know it's on your list to recognize this candidate.
Okay. A little bit closer.
To recognize this candidate.
Yes, Susan Cannon. Do we recognize her tonight?
Yes, I just wanted to be sure that we're gonna be doing that in a regular meeting.
Oh, this is the agenda review of our... Gotcha. Okay. Good. Alright. Got that. Anything else?
No.
Alright, so we got Susan Cannon right now, our new community development director, and then we have our council meeting. So you're stuck all along. Alright, um... Agenda items. Approval of salary benefits to recruit and staff these employees needs and authorized by Mayor and City Manager to execute agreements with servant providers. Followed by the business sedated by councils.
Mr. Pike is gonna present that for us.
I'm good.
No. There's a red light, but I'm gonna get it. Here on down. There you are. Trey, can you hear this already? Trey, can you hear her? Can you hear her?
Yeah. Um, in your package tonight for approval on the consent agenda, I believe, is the recommended benefits package, recruiting package for the city employees. This would not apply contractors, of course. Uh, the document that you have in the agenda is, uh, the result of dialogue that's happened over the past couple of weeks between council and the city manager. I've attempted to capture all those comments, and what you have in front of you should be the final package. Once this is approved, we'll start working with the benefits broker to actually put something together that's a little bit more attractive, that we'll be able to post to our website, job payers, other opportunities that we have when it gets time to start hiring for our police force. Uh, but what you have in front of you tonight is kind of the meat that will go into that prettier document.
What section does that... What section does that end in our packet? H6. There it is. There. Alright.
And without, I'll just open up to any questions that you might have. And we'll go from there.
Okay, so the retirement section reflects that section that Councilman Gebbia kinda directed us all on, which was, "Thank you, Joe, for your retirement, uh, which is better for the city." And we think better for the employees, too.
Although, I guess I have a question. I don't know if I'm misreading this, but it says the city will match up to a 2:1 ratio of the 10% of eligible compensation.
Right. I'd understood it was a 5% of...
Well, the employee would put in 5, the city would match another 10. So they put in 3%, the city would match 6. So for every 1%, the employee puts in, the city would match 2% to get to the 10 for the city.
So we're really only matching 5% of employed contractors?
That's correct.
I think that's just a little confusion.
Yeah, I certainly didn't clarify that because...
Just clarify on that.
And I believe I have an example in there.
Where?
It says that the employee puts 5% in, the city contributes 10%, but there's nothing about that being a cap. We just need to clarify that that 5% is in fact a cap.
Yeah, that is certainly the city manager and I, our understanding.
It says about 2:10%, right?
That's correct. And the final document will, the one that we actually release, will certainly have that in clear terms.
Well, but it also says, yeah, you just clarify that it's based on 5% of the number.
Right. And if they put 0 in, the city puts 0 in.
That's correct.
If they put 1% in, the city puts 2% in.
That's correct.
So this way, the employee has a buy-in, and they're all matching this depending on them wanting to save a little more money.
Absolutely.
In the housing program, it talks about a first come, first served basis. What is that basis?
The budget, when council sets the budget, will, uh, the city manager and the mayor will present a budget that will have, uh, an anticipated amount in the event that more people want to participate in the housing program. What's been budgeted? Do you have either a situation where you can amend the budget to include more officers in that program, or you can cut it off and say, "This is all we're gonna pay for in the current fiscal year, we revisit again later here"?
And how do they apply this to police officers?
Sworn officer classes.
Right, and so I'll just explain to the press and get them to be here. Uh, we are gonna be providing incentive for police officers to live within the city at $400 a month for the first two years, $300 for the third year, $200 for the fourth year, and $100 for the fifth year. Correct?
Correct.
Do we, I guess we'll set that amount for this year. This is the first year that we'll be hiring new officers, and do we anticipate what that number might be for the 13 building?
Uh, there is an amount included, uh, well, there was an amount I assumed, uh, when we were putting together the police budget, but of course, the police budget has not been set yet, so at which time, uh, staffing and other considerations for the police department comes together. That's certainly a number that we can revisit, uh, based on, you know, I personally think it's a great program, and if you could have, uh, more officers living in the city, then there certainly is a benefit that offsets that, uh, $400 cost, but obviously, it's not a bottom, it's a pit either, so...
What?
Once we have, once we know who the staff is, you know, what the funding will apply, et cetera, we can actually put something more firm down in that budget.
What was your working number for 13 that you had in mind?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I'm taking a guess, but I'm going to guess one way. Uh, I think it was around the $8,000 mark. I could be wrong, but I can...
Sorry, you forgot. Was that just for balance of this year?
That was for the balance of this year.
So does this program, uh, is this for people moving in and out of the city, or residents may already be, police officers may already be living in the city?
It would apply to any officer that was already in the city before we moved in the city. It would apply whether it be rent or homeowner, so either one would be able to participate.
Is that advisable? Do it that way?
I would. I think it's, you know, I think it's a great incentive to recruit, keep your police officers in town. Besides the saving on fuel, you've got just the increased awareness for, you know, a police car to park in your neighborhood.
That's the real incentive.
Would you say, what way? You're talking about the inner or outer city? Yeah, like, I know there's probably a couple of officers that are gonna be applying who have pretty good jobs and have houses, I just didn't know if there was a means test or anything, so I guess you don't wanna deny somebody that...
No, there's nothing like that.
Well, and that's why I think we talked about phasing it out over the years, too. It doesn't go on forever, and that anticipates that, uh, that you get salary and you grow on to the number, too. Um, I just appreciate the opportunity that we, I know we pulled this and tabled it and had a couple of weeks to sit down and really have some long discussions with you and our HR director. I really wanna thank you for all the comparative analysis that you provided us of the many cities, the other companies, statewide analysis, and I think we're pleased that we were able to tweak it a little bit so that it's by far not the richest plan, but it's a, it's a good, robust, highly competitive plan that we think will help attract, uh, a very top level of, uh, police department. Uh, I think we also got in our suggestions to, um, come off the 100% funding on medical benefits and bring it down a little bit, and then also on this matching on the 401K, instead of giving them just a, uh, a blank amount of, uh, certain percentage with no obligation on their part. I am pleased that we're asking them, or incentivizing them, to have some skin in the game and to, uh, invest some of their, uh, their salaries, but it's good for everybody around, and I'm pleased to follow that.
Question for Chris. If, uh, we really haven't spoken about this, but I wanted to talk about, uh, if you have any thoughts on when this city would be able, uh, look at self-funding health insurance benefits? Or at least the plan is administered by a third party, Blue Cross, or something like that?
Yeah, that's actually a topic that I've done quite a bit of research in, and quite, honestly, my answer would be never. Uh, based solely on the size of the city, uh, to be beneficial, you probably get at least 300 to 500 participants. Otherwise, you run, you run the chances of one or two people really just exploding your claims and, uh, making it non-managable.
So, we could look at, um, co-op for other cities or something like that, though. Is that even feasible, like with Deloitte or Sandy Springs or Chambly or...
It's possible. I'm not aware of any that are actually doing that, and you really gotta get the, uh, then the insurance company, even though you're self-insured, you'll have a, a Blue Cross or a United in Sandy Springs to plan for you, and you'll have to get their buy-in on this play. Then there's the question of, okay, when claims goes up, you know, whose fault is it, and, you know, how do we share that? For example, we were looking at the analysis, Sandy Springs, their premiums are really low. There's no incentive for them to join something like this. Then, if you have a company that's really high, no one's going to want to partner with them. So, in theory, it's possible, and reality, it usually just doesn't happen.
Second question is, what, what, any expectation of what about the care, when we have some healthcare regulations changing coming up in 2014?
Well, we actually have something in 2013, in fact. Uh, one of the provisions of the health insurance now that you have is preventive care is covered.
Correct.
And if you go to your doctor for an annual visit, there's no copay and a lot of pocket expenses whatsoever. That has to be full insurance, and that's because of the Patient Affordability Care Act that was passed.
And this is an annually renewable plan, or is this a...
This first plan here, because we didn't have a lot of staff on, the premiums are a little rich.
Right.
They're a lot rich. Uh, but what Blue Cross was willing to do was write that for only a six-month period, at which time we can have our, uh, officers on board, we'll have more participants. Usually, when you get into that 50-employee mark, it starts to look a little bit better and matching what your claims are gonna be going on.
I think those healthcare exchanges across state line opportunities, when they get those set up, they're made, you know, I just wanna make sure, you know, I think there are going to be changes coming with the healthcare system and to, you know, places we can go shopping, so I'm glad to check that out.
Yeah, and just to comment on that, every year, the city will build out, bid out its health coverage. Look at the different options that are out there. Uh, it's an industry where if you don't bid it out, your increases aren't based on, you need to think over then, at least over 15% out there and see if they take it. So we will bid it out over here, and of course, that will always look at all the options that exist.
Could you briefly give us, you know, we had talked about having a tobacco plan, where, can you explain what we have with that? It was approved or whatnot?
Yeah, the way your plan is set up right now is the city will pay 90% of the premiums for the employees and the tenants. If the employer dependent has a tobacco user on the plan, that amount drops to 80%.
We're one of the only cities in the metro area that's doing that, correct?
That's correct.
That's... I'm sorry, say that again?
The coverage for, uh, what the city will pay for health, uh, insurance is at 90%. Uh, if there is a tobacco user on the plan, that figure will drop to 80%.
And is it correct that a number of carriers initially turned us down just simply because we have too small of a pool to start with?
Uh, they initially turned us down partly because of the small pool, but also because we had no history. We had two or three that actually quoted us, but we had about four or five who did times.
But we've been able to secure insurance with Blue Cross, Blue Shield?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
So that's it. So we have a six-month renewal on that?
That's correct.
That's good. Okay, so then we'll get to speed up then.
We don't have any kind of, uh, exercise wellness program in this benefits package, do we?
Uh, not yet, and that's something that I've done a lot of work with, both in Crepe and Dunwoody. Actually, got a couple of words for our wellness program in Dunwoody, uh, but that's really something that the finance director, the city manager, and the human resources manager should work on together, and I didn't wanna take that plan away from the incoming finance director.
Right. Great. Good. I think it may be important whether, you know, if we fit the police force. I think it's also considered, in terms of the way that we're working to deal with it.
And it's, it's good morale, is whether you choose the employees that you care about. Uh, one example, if we do it, Dunwoody, our brighter and has fresh food available for employees to come grab and have more of, and I do for that.
Okay. I guess there's, uh, there's a lot of talk about, uh, robust programs attracting best and brightest police officers and levels up. I'm wondering if, uh, any of us has been vetted with anybody who has police experience, and are these in fact the programs that police officers are looking for, and are we, we strengthening those that seem to be their hot buttons and possibly backing off on those that have been around, this is ever so important to those, uh, to those staff when they, when they come on board?
Uh, we haven't personally vetted it with anyone in particular as much as we've looked at what other cities have done to recruit and retain good employees. Uh, first and foremost is good health insurance, uh, and after that, retirement, take-home car, uh, the housing allowance, all those are important, depending on the type of employer you're looking to recruit, things such as, uh, education reimbursement, continuing education on the job as well, those all factor into it. We certainly did go through a universe of possible benefits, and we picked the ones that seemed most advantageous to get the officers that we're looking for.
I think there's also a caveat, and then to some of these, uh, some of these things we've adopted, that we wanna be careful not to break things. We're trying to sharpen the pencils on this, and we brought some things down, payload less, but, uh, we have a caveat that if the police chief is finding that any of our reductions, any of this stuff has a negative effect on recruiting the best police officers, we'd shoot, I think the city manager, go ahead and explain what that would mean.
Correct. That's exactly right, you know, Davis. What I wanted to be sure of was that we had some flexibility, because we can expect that the majority of, at least the first base of officers, probably will come from the metro area, so that's our first and foremost competitor. So I didn't want the ability that if the chief found that he could not compete in order to attract an officer, especially a seasoned officer to come over, that I'd like the opportunity to revisit that with you all, so that we could make some adjustments in order to, to capture the, uh, the type of employees that you all are expecting.
Yeah, I know when you and I and Rebecca were talking about this, that was something we mentioned every time, though, you know, as we brought things down, it's something that's gonna mess with our quality of officer, we could always revisit, so, um, I think these are great, I think they're, I don't think we have much of a problem, but we do have another option if it turns out to negatively affect our recruitment pool. Alright, um, anything else on the benefits package?
The education program, it says improve job skills, will there be something that will, will better define that as far as what, what is reversible and how it, uh, does improve their job skills?
Absolutely. The HR department will work on policies that reflect all of these, uh, cell phone use, take-home cars, education benefits, housing allowance, all those will have policies that go in with them to make sure that there's no abuse, make sure they're administered correctly, and that the chief of goals that we want to achieve.
And does that, does that include required certification, or is that outside of that amount, or how's it to be handled?
Uh, the way the education reimbursements written is that it would apply to all the employees, sworn or not. Are you meaning certification as in just post-certified officers, or are you...
Yes, if there's some type of certification that's required out of state...
Well, there's something required for their job, uh, for example, you're hiring a CPA or a finance broker position. Her continuing education is required to maintain her state license. The city would pay for that, but that's not what this is for. This would be for getting advanced degrees such as, uh, social degree, master's degree, bachelor's, et cetera, for employees that don't have those already.
What about if somebody wants to take the language course to become more proficient and be able to be a better police officer, police officer, let's say, for the community?
They, the way the tax laws are written, those are two separate things, and that would fall into that first category that I talked about with continuing on your on-the-job requirements. Uh, what this package is for is, uh, an education assistance program, as defined by the IRS, uh, for advanced degrees. So those are two different things. For you, for your example, that would be something that the officer would take up with his commander, supervisor, police chief, et cetera, and say, "Why do you want to do this?" Police chief would look at his budget, his valuable resources, and decide whether or not that's something they want to do, but that would be outside of this program.
Alright. Anything else on the benefits? I, well, with the next, a little bit more of you here. So, providers, long-term, if you want to let us know. Streetlight assessment.
Well, the streetlight assessment, I just wanted to give you a, a brief update. Public Works Department is still identifying the commercial districts within the streetlights. As you recall, we are looking at creating an assessment that would be citywide. Currently, many of the residential units in the city are paying an assessment, and that's a formula based on, uh, linear front footage. Uh, we were, we were trying to determine if the commercial districts were included in that, and we have found evidence that many of the commercial properties, and I just learned, um, late last week, that part of the PCID is also paying into this assessment from DeKalb County, which we're wanting to bring over. So, um, in speaking with Richard today as to where he is, he's working through the tax plans. I've talked with the county about the release of parcel mapping and layering. Uh, we've not received that yet, but I've been assured today that we will be getting that. So with that information, Richard would be able to provide more definitive information on which pole is attached to which property, especially as a commercial sign. So we're hoping to come back in May with a full streetlight assessment program for you all to consider for approvals.
Alright. Um, any questions about that? Alright, intergovernmental agreement on these. Do you have something? Everybody here? Intergovernmental agreement on this.
Well, at this point in time, we have not gotten the, uh, update back from the county on the, on the police department, and where we've asked them to go ahead and outline that piece as to carrying those $100 until next year. We do have tonight, uh, for your review if you desire, if the regular meeting, the solid waste management services, they have agreed in that case to give us till April the 30th to make a decision as to one or two days a week pickup. And, uh, and at the end of the month, also, the, uh, city management made with the folks over there in their public works department or their waste management department, can talk about recycling.
Is that, um, for the, uh, two, four times to three times pickup? Is that something that can we renew yearly, so that next year, if we get a lot of outcry about it, we can go...
It's a one-time pickup. It's one time.
Binding forever?
Binding forever, so...
Really?
That's what they had in there.
I don't know about that clause.
If you want us to go back to the wheel, we'll work some more on it, we'll see about it.
We're traveling to the unknown.
Well, Mr. Gebbia also, that's a program that he's exploring.
You know, we, just very, very quickly, uh, we were toyed with the idea of looking for alternatives to this as a, as a backup, and apparently, uh, DeKalb County is not in a position to appease us with a pilot program, so based upon the outcome of this, I'm gonna recommend that, uh, re-instruct council to, um...
Staff.
With staff, to put, uh, staff, yes, I mean, legal counsel, to put together an RFP, and let's investigate what our options are price-wise, uh, because our charter must obviously secure higher levels of services at the best possible price.
Well, um, with this, signing this agreement or agreeing to this, you're saying it's, would that bind us for eternity?
No, Mayor. What it has is, it's a, it's a year-to-year, this runs to the end of this year.
Right.
We have a 180-day out clause for any reason, basically, they do, too, 180-day out clause. Uh, the election, the one and two, they have this one-time election.
Okay.
But the, the reality of it all is that everything's always up for renegotiation at each renewal. It's an automatic renewal if we don't act on it. Uh, we have to give it a six-month advance notice, which makes good sense, because there is a, um, it's a very leg or intensive piece that they have, a number of people that they have, and if we were to elect to go one day a week, there certainly are gonna, there's gonna be impacts to their staffing levels and their way, how they're gonna have to bring down their staffs, as well as the capital, the capitalization of the trucks and other items.
Counsel, is there, um, an inclination one way or the other, whether to, uh, adopt the IGA?
Um, from a timeframe standpoint, you said April 30th is their deadline for making this thing?
Uh, April the 30th is when we have to notify them if they want one or if we want it once or twice a week.
And that's separate from the IGA?
That is part of the IGA.
So we're not gonna do that tonight, then? Right?
It's all, it's all up to you when you, when you make a determination to do it.
Well, I kinda wanted more public input for next meeting on, on that issue. Um, any comments from you all?
Well, just, just back to the timeframe, right? So if we were to look at privatizing, we put out an RFP, and you said that, that we don't have an opportunity to give them enough advance notice to be able to cancel out this year?
Well, they're, they're traveling right now under the, under the charter, uh, where we have the opportunity to have them for a period of time do, do certain items for us. What this does is it takes it out of the charter transition period, and it puts it in an intergovernmental agreement between the two governments, is how you wish to go forward. And this is the same agreement, I believe, that they're gonna posit for the other cities that they provide services for for garbage, in terms of making an election as to one or two times a week. I believe that's because of, they wanna set up a system, I believe they're probably gonna go one time a week in the rest of the anti-cooperative county, but if, uh, it certainly is advantageous to them for them to continue two times a week in the cities at a higher rate, because it certainly, it does good things in terms of what they have to do with manpower that they're not gonna be able to, they're gonna have to either riff them or do something else with them.
And in the contract term that we would be signed with that IGA would go to the end of 2013?
It does, and it has automatic renewals, I believe. It's a 50-year term with automatic renewals and a 180-day notice provision.
So if we put out an IGA, we'd have, we could give, we'd have till July to give them six months notice to change, that'd give us, that'd give us enough time.
So the RFP before that, I just wanna know, so we can, for tonight's, make, tonight's meeting a little more smoothly, are we prepared to vote yes on the intergovernmental agreement on, on...
Let me just ask a question. What would happen if we did not agree to an IGA with that decision?
I would, I would believe that David go ahead and make an election for you to do one-time-a-week service. a week service, they would have you being serviced as the unincorporated person to the county.
We'll back to the gym, any comments?
Joe asked my question, I think, what happens if we don't sign it, we possibly have more flexibility, we're also gonna have them making decisions for it with regard to one or two times, and it seems like, I don't know what the polls did, but it seemed like earlier, the polls seemed to be trending toward one time a week, you've also mentioned recycling a couple times again, what's happening with the recycling program?
Part of what this IGA says is that we have to participate in their recycling program, and it's the city manager works with their director in working out how the recycling takes place.
So, if we don't sign an IGA, you continue on one, what's our notice period under that scenario?
If we don't sign the IGA, then they would continue to give services to us until the end of the period is allowed under the charter, and of course, they have no duty thereafter to provide any services for us, they might elect not to at that point in time.
What is that period under?
Is that two years?
It is.
Two years, right?
Yeah, I believe, yes it is.
Okay, so if, just as a point of information here, if the IGA is not signed, are we still bound to 180-day prior notice to cancellation?
You are not.
Yeah, okay.
So, we're not voting on table yet tonight, I would assume?
I don't know that it's actually added to the calendar, we had it finished on the night, so we brought it to you if you wanted to add it.
It's not off of course.
Okay, so, this is what I'm hearing, if we take no action, we go into a default vote, where they will probably make the choice for us as one a week, if we do take an action, it's, we're bound to the end of the year, to 180-day notice, and renewable yearly, 50 years, if just saving. I'd like to poll council here, what you're finding in your districts as far as where the residents, what the perceptions from your residents on one or two pickups a week on the solid waste?
I can tell you that folks over 50 want once a week, people with kids want twice a week, that's what I've found.
I would say that I've generally found that people would be happy with once a week, I think people are finding that they're recycling so much that they really don't have a full second day of garbage pickup, also, my sense of going door to door is that people really like DeKalb County sanitation, it's one thing that people think that DeKalb does well, I mean, they know the names of their trashmen, they wave to them, they're helpful, so I would just move cautiously on this one, I also just wanted to review, we did do it, an online survey, I was just trying to remember what those numbers were, it was like 60% in favor of the one-time a week, but I think it was about...
It's on the website, isn't it?
300 people or so, I don't know if it's still up there or not, and I think DeKalb did a survey too, do you know the outcome of that?
Last I heard, I think they were trending toward the one week, and I think it was more decision cost than service, and I think most people have said, you wanna keep the same amount, or you wanna increase the amount, and the decision is made based on that, or based on the service that they're getting, so I think most people aren't, they've been once a week.
I can tell you, district forward, it's a resounding move towards not having any increased costs.
Right.
And I totally back that.
Right, I mean, people love the fact that DeKalb County will come and pick up, you know, the old sofa mattress on the street too, I mean, not all your private providers.
That's not unique to DeKalb, the information that I've...
Sometimes you have to pay extra for that.
Well, no, the information that I've gotten so far from several people that I've spoken with, that's a standard operating procedure, I mean, that's available.
Well, like I say, the sense I get is that people do think DeKalb does a good job.
I do agree with the DeKalb people do like the DeKalb sanitation service, I just, I don't agree that most people, just, I've found a pretty even divide on people with kids, twice a week, people older, the kids grown, like this under the table, and that table, don't care to have it more than once a week.
I think...
A birthday party, you have a couple birthday parties on the weekend, you're gonna need five times a week.
I think that putting an RFP out is a great thing to do, we won't really know whether or not the public wants to privatize or stick with DeKalb County, until we really show them the alternatives and have a chance to see it ourselves with an RFP.
I think the best world of all this would be, we're probably gonna move towards once-a-week pickup, that seems to be the consensus for one, if we put it out on RFP, and we find that we can set the criteria for improved service with four pickups a week, we can do that at a better price.
The mattress stuff too.
Everything, the whole kit kaboom, and the washing machine too, if we, I think that would be the exercise to go through here, see if it's a valid option.
I do wanna call, I'd like for us to be, try to lead by example and be conservative to DeKalb County, and if we can plan so that we can give them as much notice and not play games with them, I think to have an IGA is a responsible way to do business with DeKalb County, and it reflects well on our city, rather than leaving them hanging, I don't see the downside in not having an IGA, if we can plan for an RFP to be accepted and evaluated in a timeframe that we make a decision six months down the road, we just have to stick to our schedules.
Alright, are there any other government agreements, or is that it right now?
That's all, the police we already mentioned, I did, we did, it come over to promote business on last week's agenda, so, if you desire to go forward with this, certainly it's an available option for you tonight, otherwise, you can just table both of those to the next meeting.
So, what number is that?
L3 and 4.
Okay, table 3 and 4, we'll put that on the agenda announcements, is that right?
When we can, or when it's called, we just have a motion to table.
Alright, what's other agenda, do we just need to go through this agenda?
Yes, if we could, I'd like to just point your attention to some of the items under consent agenda, if we may, number three is the approval to be forward with the Aztec systems, that's for the city clerk, for the record-keeping, and for taking of the minutes.
Okay, we have a...
Yes.
City Works.
I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself.
Who's here, is anybody here to talk about that from City Public Works?
The GIS system, that's it.
City Works, I'm sorry.
This is, this is Public Works, trucking, it's supposed to tie with it, but it's a separate, at least the way, that's what I was saying to you.
City Works is very powerful, database, basically all work orders, tracking there, costing there, C-click Fix interface is loaded too, and loads directly into it for our citizen employees, so it's a very powerful program, and being used in Deadwood and in primary or cities all over.
This is $50,000, right, the cost of this, is that right?
I think it already costs more.
I think it is.
Yeah.
Well, is there any other, did we bend this out, or is that stuck price, and you said, hey, we'll give you 40, and how do we, do we just take what they told us?
That is cheaper, now they, they basically customize it with the city, depending on the size of the city, the typical number of work orders.
Do we just say, can we not go back and say, we'll give you this much, I don't really have to customize it, but, you know...
We gradually change it.
One of the things, trends in technology is certainly software as a service, and just monthly fees to, rather than buying, purchasing software licenses outright, since they go out of dates so quickly, this package I know had an $8,000 a year annual renewal fee, is there marketplace opportunities for this type of software, as a software as a service, just as a monthly fee, rather than as a upper?
No.
Yeah, I might need to go into that business.
Let me mention too, for the council, when we, when I was negotiating the task order with Lo, this was included as an add-on for them to be able to perform, so, we were looking at 50,000, and this has come in at 51,970, so we're very close to what we had projected and what we were expected for, the task order, for the personnel and their cost, and then the associated equipment and/or, in this case, software.
I guess my only question is, we've all downed our individual software programs, do we know that this one interfaces clearly and seamlessly with the other programs that we have, whether it's GIS, whether it's finance, if you're tracking work orders, does that tie to finance and the software that they have, and how has our, what, I guess with this piece will be sort of our entire software package for the city of Brookhaven to interface with each other as we go forward?
It interfaces with GIS and the capabilities to output any format that you want to load into another, so, we kinda want redundancy between the finance system and ours, it's kind of checking balance, and we download it to any format, because you can output an ASK file.
How about this, do we have a process in place, Marie, where IT kind of gets a pass at all these software we're buying to make sure that it is compatible with everything else in the city?
Well, I know that they do communicate with all the departments when they're looking at software purchases.
But IT in particular, would it have a veto or something like this, if there wasn't?
Yes, we're doing IT for the whole process so far.
Okay.
They gotta install it, you know, the same folks are doing it in Deadwood, they have installed the interface.
One of the things that I talked to Daniel about in the IT department was, you know, it is, it's very common for an organization to have software system, especially the special software systems that don't communicate to each other, and I had had a conversation with Daniel at one point about making sure that, you know, we had, we addressed the management side of our city operations, and made sure that the software systems that we did have had the ability to pull data from centralized databases, so we can create a dashboard system that, you know, I talked about some time ago, because a dashboard system, if we can pull and, you know, drill down into the databases to find out, you know, what our trends are, or sort of what are causing problems, is there a correlation between, you know, different areas of our population and road conditions, you know, and having a database that allows communication across software platforms, and that usually is done through some kind of SQL server database supporting, that's where I think that Daniel, I'd like to see us have some administrative meetings with Daniel and all the departments and the management to talk about what data do we need from each department to be able to make good management decisions, and also to communicate to the public, because I'd love these systems to be able to report directly without a lot of labor-intensive work populated on our website, so that we can show people, here's what our project list is, here's what we're doing, and not have to have internal processes to put that information up there.
Alright, we gotta move on, because we only have 30 minutes.
Just a couple more things, again, on the consent agenda, there is an approval agreement between Cushman and Wakefield, this is the brokerage firm that will be assisting us in locating and identifying real estate, such as City Hall, so they will be working with us, I have, just for your information, we have included a proviso that if the city finds something on their own, that they're not subject to any financial obligations to Cushman-Wakefield.
Alright, thank you.
Number five on the consent agenda, just for information for the public, as well as the mayor and council, you all know that Brookhaven has their own Chamber of Commerce, and Mr. Art Freeman is here as the executive director, they are constructing their board of directors, and the board did approve to allow a council member, an elected official to serve on the board as ex officio, so, the appointment that we have on here is for Mr. Joe Gebbia, and that appointment is made by you, Mr. Mayor.
Right.
So, that is again for information purposes.
I have my mind on you, so, yes, Joe would be a great representative for Brookhaven for that, thank you, Joe, for your willingness to serve.
My pleasure.
And thank you, Art, for letting us have a member on the board, okay?
Later in the agenda, you're going to have the recognition for your appointments for the development authority, we're very excited about creating a development authority for the city, that will be one of your development arms, so...
But their appointments won't take place until the next meeting?
Correct, correct, further, there is, chapter seven is further into the agenda, and that is pertaining to the construction board of appeals, primarily reducing that from nine members down to five, is that my call?
Everybody okay with that, nine to five?
Right.
Inside, with, in construction board of appeals?
And the technical committee.
Yeah, and then there were some other technical changes, as far as, some things that already have been adopted in the new business.
Right, this is a first read, so it's not gonna require any...
Which number is this?
Okay, I'm searching for it right now.
Number two.
Number two, under new business, L2. Okay.
Do we have anything that shows what changes were made, I mean, I see the entire code, do we have anything, can you provide something between now and when you're through with to show us what changes were made?
We can have staff highlight that and send it out to you prior to your second reading and adoption.
Okay, alright, we're also, let me go back to K2, that's on the, that's the second read of that, we all know about that, number three, auto committee, that's the second read of that, these are all second read, okay, that's why it skipped, learning, what's this, what is, okay, that's the gas light, why does it say second read on one part and first read on, so there's a first read here, under gas light five, K5, there's a, is that right?
Second read.
Well, it says single read, but then the next one says...
No, it's probably just a title, that should be second read.
On the end of that, okay, alright, so, title on K2, at the end of K2, which goes on page three, second read.
K2.
K5, sorry, K5, second part of K5, on page three, top of page...
This is first read?
Yeah, it's supposed to be second read.
Split to the...
It's supposed to read second read, okay, development authority, that's first read of the development authority, you've vetted that bill, obviously?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Let me just clarify, this was to, we wanted to have our own ordinance that clarified the development authority, even though it's provided for in state law?
Right.
Okay.
Sets the terms, and allows for an ex officio member, and sets the number of people, and then, two, is this the one, this is buildings and... Is that it?
And that's it, and then three and four under new business, we've already talked about deferring that.
Okay, that's pretty short.
Yes.
Anybody have any, any councilor's having a question about any of these, so we can get this, we have a very compressed schedule, as we're all aware, there's a big school meeting coming on.
We're also gonna, K4, I think we talked about deferring that, that's chapter 17.
K4 on a table, or defer table, right?
K4 is which department? That's the department, we're still working on, just exterior, right? Interior, yeah, interior, exterior, we're continuing, we've met today with staff, and there's some additional changes, and they just need to make sure that everything jogs from the back.
Yeah, so, one of the concerns that I do want to make sure that you're aware of is, with third-party verification of interior compliance, there's a possibility that those people can be, you know, that might, they might overlook things, since, I'm not sure what their penalty is, if they go in, let's say, and just play devil's advocate, if they go into a big apartment complex that has conditions that are, and problems, but the apartment complex just says, look, there's an extra brand...
They can be, according to wire, they can, a year in jail, a thousand dollar fine, or most importantly, they can lose their certification, but how do you ever verify something like that?
Well, if one of our inspectors goes to a apartment with a problem, they find that this was checked off, you know, two weeks before, where it wasn't, we talked about that in the last work session, I think we also talked about, on our list that we give to facilities, that we're having a disclaimer that we don't endorse any of the service providers. a disclaimer that we don't endorse any of the service providers on that. Yeah, so just make sure that we are ready to table K4, L3 and L4. So that's going to require motions from somebody up here on agenda announcements, after agenda announcements. All right, any other business announcements?
Well, we're going to discuss how we handle the presentation of the school issues later in the afternoon.
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess we can, but Murray, did you get any kind of agenda for me for the school thing?
I have your list of board members there, but that's...
Well, I'll get some input so we can weigh in on this. So we have Michael Thurman at 7:00, he's going to speak for maybe 10 minutes. And if Mike Jacobs can make it, he's going to speak after Michael Thurman, then there's going to be questions. I guess we can do 30 minutes of questions there, then we can have other parties, other educators or other people, education advocates or other, Dan Weber I think is coming?
Well, I just, just as a, I'd like to throw it out there as a possible format, to have Michael Thurman, then Dan Weber. I asked him to become the former state senator to speak about the charter cluster idea. I think that very much fits with what Michael Thurman is speaking about and then to have Mike Jacobs, then open it up. Because the only person that I asked to give an overview was Dan Weber. Nancy Jester will be here and...
I think Elektra Johnson might be as well. The only thing, I don't want to breach etiquette by having two elected officials, one having a non-elected official between, you know, that's a decorum violation, but nothing happening.
I would suggest too that we, when Mr. Thurman is here, that we give him enough time to talk and I think there'll be a lot of questions and answers, so I think it would make more sense to keep that sort of contained and then here next.
That's what I had planned on to begin with, I had changed something, I don't know what happened, but I always want to have Michael Thurman questions and then Mike and Dan and whoever else. Oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to know if we already informed the public that we would have...
We already informed the public that we would have the superintendent speak, then questions, then Mike...
Oh, we did?
Then questions and then advocates.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure there's no questions for the public.
Oh, good, because that's what we wanted to begin with, I thought it got changed to, it didn't get changed? Okay, good.
Good, I think that's a better format.
And we'll have, and at the end, I'm going to have a little, my judo instructor is going to have a little table set up, I want to recognize him before the school, because they have a great kids program and I want to bring him to Brookhaven because there's no judo in Brookhaven and I want to bring the judo school to Brookhaven, so we can find a place in Beaver Island where it could be a great location.
Before we get off this, on the agenda for the tonight's school?
Yes, only judo questions.
Marshall and John should be here also.
Right, I've got a list.
Okay, I think it would be appropriate for them to be, up here is represented as well.
I think we can recognize them if they want to come, the mic can speak briefly. If we get too many people, it can be, you know...
I'd also leave that to Chief Lieutenant Thurman.
Okay, that's fine.
But I would better recognize and give them...
The other two that have interest in schools.
Absolutely, right, it's one, districts one and two, right?
Well, just to give you all an update of what I've been trying to work on in the background, I've spoken to most of you about this, but there's an opportunity to create the charter cluster. The easiest way to do that is to have the five schools that feed into Shandly Middle and Shandly High, create them all as a charter cluster.
Is this allowable in the current legislation, current law?
Allowable, and it is going to, it is currently in formation at Drew Hills as a charter cluster and Dunwoody as a charter cluster. The deadline is August 19th. And to do, to put that package together, you really need the assistance of the Georgia Charter School Association, that's why Nancy Jester is here, going to be here tonight, she's now working with them, but this will have to come from the people. I believe that administration is, at least the charter cluster is on board with this idea. We simply have to motivate the citizens and inform them that if this is something they want to pursue, the time is now. Because if this waits a year, the DeKalb school board most likely will have a solution on their own and it really won't be a solution that involves parents governing a charter cluster system and giving control back to the schools.
I guess I have a concern, I mean, I understand putting the information out there, I have a real concern with the council supporting that situation because we've left out two, a third of our children who are in the cross keys cluster. We've got a much more difficult situation that we've got to address, you know, we've got two clusters that we need to address, we're not as concise as some of the other school districts, so while, again, providing information, go for it, but we've got to be very careful that we...
I'm going to give a disclaimer before all these people speak.
Yeah, we've got to make sure that we cover both sides.
And not a school board.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'd love to see the people at Drew Hills get a charter cluster together and I think their citizens in Brookhaven and Mike and...
Crosskey, sorry.
Might be able to do that because I think that's, that's a way to fix, that is certainly a possibility to help fix the system.
All right, any other questions? Are we all good on this agenda because we need to move through it quickly tonight? Are we all ready to move quickly through it?
Yes.
What did we find out about the gas light? There was questions about...
They have failed and refused to respond to our request. We've called them multiple times to put on hold and they don't want to talk to us.
So we're approving it as is?
If you desire to prove it as is, we've done a one read on it, if you desire to determine to deny it in the two read and let that denial supersede your one read approval, we can go forward with that too, but those are really our two choices at this point in time.
Okay, also, we're quick, we're going to have, we're going to need to amend the agenda, so if somebody needs to do this, to provide a moratorium on the, any development overlay. Jim, Rebecca, you want to know about that?
Yes, where do you want to put this on the agenda?
On F, well, I guess we can, well, now, where would that go?
New business.
New business, add-on to new business at the end.
All right, so we'll stick there. After...
After the table, that's three, that's all.
Okay, so after two, so we're going to do new three.
This is just a resume?
Just for your understanding, up there's a focus, it's a, we're going to put a moratorium on any new development in the Brookhaven overlay, which is on Peachtree and Dresden, so that we can address our overlay properly as a council and put the needs of the citizens in there. There's nothing hugely, that we see hugely impactful on the overlay language, but we do have some changes we need to make and we want to make sure that nobody sneaks in without a sounding moratorium on that, so that's what that's about. All right, anything else, Murray?
That's it, thank you.
Council, anything else from council? Bates, Joe, Jim, Rebecca. All right, we'll reconvene in a few minutes at 6:00 on the dot, thank you.